Well, welcome everyone to this special joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and Clackamas County Vector Control District Board of Trustees. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Roberts, and I invite the Vector Control Board if you'd please come forward and sit at the table now, we'd appreciate that. Commissioner, so for the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner West is out of the office, roll call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Helm.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
President.
Chair Roberts.
Here.
And if I may, for the Board of Trustees, the Vector Control Board of Trustees, I'll do a roll call for you as well, Waylon Martin.
Here.
Lowell Hannah.
Here.
Dan Green.
Here.
Thank you, back to you Chair.
All right, thank you and good morning to all of you, and could, we've already introduced yourselves, so just to begin, I will ask County Council to kind of remind us of the relevant authority to call this meeting, Jane, could you talk about that?
Yes, this meeting is called pursuant to ORS 542120, which gives the Board of County Commissioners the authority to call special meetings of the Board of Trustees of the Vector Control District for the purpose of investigation and supervision of the district's affairs.
All right, thank you, and I will just share a brief statement to kind of explain why I've called this meeting, and I and the county administrator were notified of some operational personnel issues at the district, as detailed in the published minutes from the Board of Trustees' meetings on January 23rd, 24th, and the 30th of this year. So since it's within the Board of Commissioners' authority to determine what steps the Board of Commissioners can take to assist Vector Control District in formulating a solution to these issues, called this meeting to ask district trustees to provide us any information or insight they would like to share with us regarding the information we received, discuss some potential next steps. So I think at this time, I'll now ask the county administrator to explain the options that are actually before us, the potential next steps, Gary?
Yes, thank you Chair and Commissioners and Board of Trustees. So options that are for possible consideration, just options, no decisions of any kind yet, just options, the county could refer a dissolution petition to the voters under ORS 198, the county could assist with the recruitment to fill the two open trustee positions on the Vector Control Board, the county could enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Vector Control District to support responsibilities of the district such as human resources support, procurement, legal services, and other administrative-type services, or, and/or the county could prepare a letter outlining any concerns and request responses from the district board by certain dates. So those are options for you to consider, Commissioners, back to you Chair.
And thank you Gary. So I think with those options in mind, I just would say let's review the relevant Board of Trustees' previous meeting minutes to inform our conversation today, and so I'll turn to County Council, could you please note any parts of the minutes that you believe are salient for this discussion this morning?
Thank you Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and the Board of Trustees. The Vector Control District Board of Trustees held three emergency board meetings during the last week of January 2025. Minutes from these meetings are posted on the district's website. Minutes from the January 23 emergency meeting note that the trustees voted to close the Vector Control District building between January 23rd and February 27th to all personnel unless a trustee was present. Minutes from the January 24th district emergency meeting shows that a Vector Control District employee was placed on immediate paid administrative leave and that the locks to the building were to be changed. The minutes from the January 30th 2025 emergency meeting note that the Board voted to notify the Oregon City Police of the Board's suspicion that there was a felony involving Vector Control District equipment. The Board also voted to notify its insurance carrier and asked for a recommendation for a forensic auditor. Collectively, these minutes have raised concerns by the county regarding the district's affairs pursuant to ORS 452120, specifically operation and oversight of the district.
All right, thank you. So I would first turn to my colleagues here if they had any clarifying questions, or we might move on and have some questions of the Board, or the trustees, I'm sorry, so are there any questions before I move on?
Chair, the only, I just make a comment, not really a question, I am curious to understand your perspective on things, you know, I understand you have two vacancies, I want to make, at least I'm motivated to help you fill those, or we are, I think, so I'm just speaking for myself at this moment, but that's what I have here today, and I want to respect, I won't say the boundaries, I guess maybe it is the boundaries, but really, the autonomy, I want to respect the autonomy of the district, at the same token as I kind of address any kind of urgent needs or matter, which we don't understand, but the Board, the Board Chair has called the meeting, and we are all here, so we're all ears, that's what, those are my comments, Chair.
Right, anything else? Right, seeing none, I will now open the floor for the context of these meeting minutes, as well as general comments and suggestions from the Board of Trustees, so I guess I would kind of turn the floor over to you gentlemen, and if you'd like to make any comments or update us on any concerns or recommendations or thoughts that you have.
Do you want to start?
Go ahead.
The, the trustees are hobbled by a request from the Oregon City Police and by the advice of our attorney not to discuss details of what we think we know about the case until the case is put forward by the Oregon City Police. The Oregon City Police reached out to us late last week for the first time to discuss where they are on the case, the officer, excuse me, the detective in charge is Mr. Cookingham, and I imagine that he would be willing to share with you what he knows. He's asked us to continue not to share what we know outside of the public information that you've just referred to until his case is turned over to the district attorney. He thinks that will happen in the next couple of weeks. Outside of that, we'd be very happy to tell you what we know and some of our frustrations at what we haven't been encouraged to pursue at this point.
Yeah, I think that both Diane Helm and I talked that there's, these are allegations at this point, nobody's been convicted, and so that's where it is right now, and really, as we say, let the system kind of play out, I guess, and not talking specifically about the case itself, but perhaps steps that have been done to kind of move forward, maybe you could talk about that, maybe?
We, we are frustrated that the normal things we would do to try to figure out exactly what happened have been restricted by the fact that they want the Oregon City Police process to carry out before we do any investigation of our own records. So we're still uncertain how all of this happened, but there is a significant amount of vector control equipment that was purchased without our direct knowledge, maybe some peripheral knowledge, but we're not exactly sure how to describe that, a much larger purchase of unnecessary items that now we cannot find. And the attempts, our attempts to get our executive director to describe what happened have failed completely, and that resulted in our termination of him. We'd be happy to answer any questions that we can within that parameter of not discussing things that the case has brought up, and we'd be most happy to discuss everything as we begin to find out what it is after the case is sent to the district attorney.
Yeah, again, I agree, talking about the particulars of the case is kind of letting that system play out, I guess where I was kind of leaning more to is it appears that, have you started an audit, where is that at, maybe you could just educate us on that, I thought, a comment on that.
We, we were, we were subject to a call on the county's anonymous tip line, the county then did an investigation and notified us of that investigation, starting and then worked with us through the investigation. Their findings, which I assume are public, are that there was missing equipment that had been, there had been equipment that was purchased that was, seemed to be missing, and that our executive chair at the time was not completely forthcoming with the investigation. So we got a letter, a relatively simple letter, as a result of that investigation that says basically what I just said, you may have more information, what they found exactly, but we started then to look at things ourselves and ran into the situation where our attorney advised us to stop doing that, that that could be considered interfering with the police investigation. The efforts that we took to minimize things are public, and they're in those three documents that you've referred to. We have set up new protocols for ordering equipment and for receiving that equipment. The things that we don't really know exactly how it happened, we don't know that these protocols are sufficient, but they're at least a start to try to make sure we've done a better job. We've got a very good financial tracking and auditing system, but we had never conceived that there might be this apparently blatant attack on our purchasing system and inventory then of that equipment. So that's what we're, we're assuming we need to do, and like I said, we don't know if what we've done at this point is sufficient because we don't really know how this was carried out.
So I'm just trying to provide some clarity, so the internal auditor did the audit that came through the hotline, so I'm trying to understand, was there an additional audit that you guys had performed to kind of determine overall questions about your inventory and stuff like that, was there something separate of that, or is, are you just referring to the audit done by Jody?
We were, after the audit that the county did, we were starting to look into our records, didn't get very far before the attorney advised us not to continue in that route until the police were satisfied that we wouldn't be screwing up their investigation. During the audit, we worked with your employee to provide the information that she needed, so we have some idea of what we think she was finding at the time, but we don't know how complete that is.
Okay, and then one last question before I turn it over to my colleague, as far as the ballpark figure of the loss, what would you say that is, or not down to the dollar, but just ballpark amount?
I'm not certain that the police would want us to respond to that yet because they did the, the most thorough investigation of that, it's a significant amount of money.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I understand your hands are tied, and it sounds like, I understand your hands are tied.
Yes.
So, and you're getting legal advice from your attorney, which is good, and that's all good, and obviously, we probably all struggling to understand the situation, but again, understand that the Oregon City Police need to do what they need to do to complete that, and maybe there'll be more things coming forth. I want to go back to my earlier comment is, you have two vacancies, correct?
Correct.
Are you, have you advertised, or what are you doing proactively to garner interest in filling those two positions?
You want to take that, Waylon?
Yeah, so we have been working with PAC West Communications, and they have an ad for us up for vacant positions, I believe we have had two applicants, and the job listing, the listing for that I believe closes on the 14th if I'm not mistaken, but as far as interest in the vacancies, I think we've had two individuals.
All right, are those, are those zoned vacancies, meaning do they have to geographically have limits, or can anyone be on?
Geographical limits within Clackamas County.
Okay, just county, so it's not divided up in zones, all right? And anyone is eligible in the county to apply?
Correct.
And they can apply directly to your department, or to, I mean, who's the point of contact for interested applicants?
Your, the, the agency was in the county that does?
Public and Government Affairs?
Yes. We run that through the county, because this is technically a county board you appoint, so it's through Public and Government Affairs on our advisory board and Commissioners' web, Commission webpage and application process.
Okay, so, thank you, so I'll turn to you Gary, do we have any, do we know if anyone's applied yet?
There's been the two that we just heard, so far.
So two?
Two, so far, yeah.
Right, all right, I would, I would want to make sure, at least speaking for myself, that we fill those vacancies as soon as possible to help all of you out, and?
Absolutely.
And so, so thanks.
We've held off proceeding on it because the announcement was still open, so as soon as the announcement closes, we would be happy to proceed on that.
Okay, all right, Chair, that's all I have for now.
All right, I want to make sure I give all the trustees a chance to say something if they like, is there any other comment either one of you would like to make before we move on?
The fact that I feel like we're kind of blindsided about the process of how this was done, I was starting to look into it, and the attorney says, no, you got to step away, and so that's what I did, but I'm still hoping to have the opportunity to review the process of how he accomplished what was done, again, trying to be careful about saying stuff that I shouldn't because of the requirements of our attorney to say, stay clear, let the process go through, and we'll, we'll get into the details at a later date, is kind of the way we've been told how to handle this. I've wanted to get into it and dig into it, as being the treasurer, I feel like, I am very disappointed in what happened, and I feel responsible, but I don't know how it accomplished, because we've had three people that review the documents before we're paid. I being the one of them, and then the other is from an auditing firm that does our books, they went through this, and then also Teresa, which is our office manager, going through it, then it comes to me, and then I review, and if I have any questions, which I usually do have a few questions on items, I would contact Teresa and try to contact Josh at times too, but I was always given the assurance that things are right, and knowing that that wasn't the case now, it's upsetting.
Yeah.
It really is, I feel, I feel very upset that, why wasn't I able to see, and how was it done, in a manner that, well, they did raise questions on items, and then I would question that, and then if, like, one of them was the fact that I got an invoice from one organization, and all it had was five numbers, and that's all the description it was, that I was supposed to, okay, and sign the check to go to them, and I said, no. That's part of what brought on this whole thing, is that things were being done that, it just didn't make sense. I still feel like I really wanted to find out how, how is it able, how is it able to do this, and for like, what Dan stated, a significant sum, that, I don't know, like I say, I'm just wanting to get the answers.
Okay.
I kind of, I guess, leave it, try to leave it at that at this time.
All right, thank you very much, so I might turn to my colleagues for any discussion.
I just have a clarifying question, so right now, you're recruiting for two new members of the Board.
Correct.
And you have an interim executive director.
Correct.
Yes.
Are you recruiting that position as well, or is that happening in the near future?
Not at this time. Not at present, no.
No. Is that something that you think is a possibility, I guess?
The fact that the interim director is interim?
Right, would imply?
That it implies that there'll be some consideration, but we've not had time to make that a priority at this point.
Okay, so it just seems right now, you're in waiting mode, if I can just get this straight in my own head, waiting to hear what the Oregon City Police, where aspects of this will become clear to everybody, you're moving ahead with PGR, recruiting two new members of your Board, and then an issue of a permanent executive director is something that you would be looking at once all of the dust settles with these other issues, I'm just trying to get that straight in my head. And here's a question, it's always been interesting to me, since vector control is really a public health issue?
Yes.
How closely do you work with like our public health folks, and is there a possibility of more of a, of an, trying to say an umbrella, I mean, it really is an umbrella of public health, so how often do you work with them, do you see this as something that's reportable through that function that we have, and has that been a close relationship?
At times, it's been closer than it is now.
Okay.
We've had a position for the public health component of Clackamas County to be on our Board.
Okay.
I think after a lot of very boring Board meetings, they decided there were better things for them to spend their time on, but the position is, is still there if, if?
They choose.
If the county wished to have someone occupy it. It's a, it's a non-voting position, but it did provide for good communication. We have a communications plan for the situation if we were to find a human health vector in the county, that we would notify elements of the county that are involved in human health.
Yes.
And that's also involved with notifying state, and that's in our annual plan that we provide to you each year for year review. So we've got no problems with having a closer relationship, but it doesn't seem to have been particularly helpful up to this point because we haven't actually had human health vectors, excuse me, human health diseases show up that have mosquito vectors in the county. We're looking for them, we want to know about them when and if they arrive, but at present, it's a monitoring situation.
And public health is, but I'm getting it too, you're right, maybe they go into action mode when something's found, but there's a prevention piece to this that maybe we're, we need to look at too, long-term, thank you.
Thank you Martha. Any other comments, questions? Just one last one, really, can you explain to me kind of the whole role of vector control and the tax revenue that comes in, and kind of the function of it for the county, as far as how much those dollars are that you get in annually, and kind of how you guys operate, just educational, more or less?
We, we have two tax revenue streams, one of them is, I believe, six tenths of a cent of assessed value, 6.5 maybe, and that's a permanent levy, we have a five-year levy that was just passed, that's 2.5 cents per thousand. I, I'm not going to try to quote the total of those things by memory, but we could certainly provide them for you. The, the process of collecting that and so forth, it's a normal property tax collection and distribution to us, I'm sorry, I think there was another element to your question that I'm not finding.
Well, just how we kind of, I guess, operationally disperse that across the county, you identify different locations throughout the county that are concerned, and just kind of how that, how that money is dispersed, or how you disperse the resources?
The services that that money provides are dispersed across the county in zones that we've identified, operational zones, and we do our tracking and reporting against those zones, and then we, if something shows up of concern, we certainly focus in that area, but the, the general assessment of mosquito populations is done across the county, largely in all of the inhabited areas of the county, less so as you go up into the Mount Hood corridor because there's less of a population, and so much of that land up there is federal, and there's no reason to try to monitor populations up there.
Great, I just want to recognize it's really important work, and appreciate the work that's being done to address that issue across the county, so, and I turn to my colleagues, any other comments, I didn't really see any, and Gary, before I kind of move on, is there any other comments you'd like to make before we move on?
Just that, and I've been working with Amber, and we speak, and I offer to her, I'll offer to you, if there's something the county can do to help you, we're here to help, whether through a formal IGA or informally, whatever, either staff support or board support, we're here to help you, so I extend that offer publicly to you as well.
No, we appreciate that.
Right.
Definitely like to get the help, trying to get other Board members so that we're not in a, such a, we have to have at least three of us on it to be a functioning Board. Well, my term, my last term ended in November of last year, but if I'd stepped aside, we didn't have a functioning Board, so I, I had planned on stepping aside because of my age and health and stuff, 85 years old is time to pass it on to the younger folks, but I stayed on so that we could function, but then the bottom dropped out of everything, and I'm hoping that we can get additional people interested in coming on to the Board, and it's needed, and the support that the county can give us toward that end would be very welcomed.
Yeah, and just to echo what Gary said, that's exactly what we want to do, is help, and help perhaps put systems in place to make sure there's checks and balances, that sometimes they can slide through the cracks, so that's one of the things that Gary and his staff and finance are good at identifying, how we can address some of those issues, so.
Appreciate you.
So I also want to say thank you for continuing to stay in there, for your service, and hopefully the recruitment will yield some folks that? of you, the Vector Control Board and Trustees, for their time and input. The Board will consider all our options legally available to us for next steps, and we'll return in the future date to have further discussion about this. So I'm seeing Martha lean over to me, so I want to, before I close it.
Yeah, I want to thank all of you for stepping up at the plate to do this, number one, because districts are an important piece of what we do, and this district in particular, because again, I see it as a preventative public health function. I'm not sure where this is going to lead. I liked, I, I, there's no decisions being made today, but I think the county can help add capacity, and I don't want to commit to us, but Gary, what might that look like in terms of just getting a larger presence of public health more involved, or having that be a little more integrated into, this piece of it integrated more directly, so, so we can help this district really, really succeed?
Formally, it would be an intergovernmental agreement between the Duport Boards if they agreed, and formal support through public health as well. Informally, as was mentioned by the Board, there, it sounds like an extroficial Board seat, I can talk to staff and get that reinstated pretty quickly here. And certainly, again, as always available to our staff to talk at any time, to offer support and help. So I'll pursue those options.
And you said an IGA could do things like human services, procurement, legal services. So in other words, it would give the infrastructure necessary to help the Board members, you know, to help get the information they need in a timely manner.
Yes.
And at this point in time, as I said, this is just informational, because it sounds like we can't move at all until you get clarity from this system, and then you can start moving ahead. You're in the, yeah, so you're going in the right direction, I think, and, you know, I'm sorry, you know, being on a Board, whether it's a district or otherwise, is pretty difficult work. So thank you for helping.
All right. Well, if there's no, if there's no objection, this will conclude our agenda for this special joint meeting today. Again, I want to express my thanks for coming here today, and I look forward to working with all of you to figure out what those next steps are. So with that, have a great day, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, sir.